All righty, good evening, everyone. If you don't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Chief, our judges. Please drive me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're up.
Long way.
How are you today, chief?
Doing well.
Is everybody okay on that accident over on Lockwood?
Unfortunately not. I don't know the, just preliminary. Two were hurt pretty bad and potentially there may be a fatality in it, I don't know. I hadn't heard of the update on it. So, if you would like to pray with me, just please bow your heads. Dear heavenly fathers, we come tonight for the meeting of the business of the city. We ask for your blessing upon the leaders of the city, the people in the audience, those that are watching, the citizens, those that were involved in the crash today. We ask that you watch over them and protect them, bless them, and their families as well. Those that treated them, the first responders, just watch over them as they also deal with it. Lord, we ask that you bring us home safely, give us travel mercies to those that are here, and we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, chief. All righty. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, June 17th, a little bit after 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present this evening. We have no ceremonial items, so we'll move right into the approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for May 29th, 2019 work session and the June 3rd regular session.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second and a discussion.
No.
Seeing and hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our public comment portion of the meeting, I have two written requests this evening. I'll call them in the order that I received them, and the first one was from Kevin McCann. Kevin, just name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin McCann. I am president of the Tuscaloosa Homeowners Association. I live at 1109 Pheasant Circle in Winter Springs.
Great.
And thank you for this opportunity.
Of course.
I simply wanted to stop in, frankly, and say thank you, something positive. I have had a couple of conversations, oop, excuse me, I look at my notes, with Chris Wenner and Ryan Hedrich with Ultimate Image Land Care. I would like to personally, residents of Tuscaloosa, say thank you. We actually have a taxing district that you may be familiar with in Tuscaloosa that takes care of Winter Springs Boulevard and the fountains on the other end and things. Our budget is nearly a million dollars. And we do have that one little sliver, quarter of a mile approximately, that's in Oviedo. And without prompting, without any kind of encouragement or anything, somehow you've kind folks or Chris found some funds, went through, ripped out your section of Winter Springs Boulevard and did a magnificent job. And on behalf of the residents of Tuscaloosa, your neighbors in Winter Springs, Tuscaloosa is home to probably half of the city commission in Winter Springs and our mayor, our state representative Dave Smith and a number of others, we'd like to say thank you very much for what you've done. It's really genuinely noticed and appreciated.
Well, that's very kind. Thank you for coming out tonight, Kevin, taking that time. Now, since you have that nice big budget, if you want to take over that portion.
Yeah, 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 yeah. These fountains are a killer.
Public birth directors right there.
Uh-huh, yeah. Well, I would like to.
Bobby, get his number, Bobby.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to be careful in how I word this, but by all means, my number is on there, and if there's ever anything that we can do as neighbors, we would really please, by all means, reach out. I would really appreciate the opportunity to return the favor or in any way support Oviedo. Been wonderful neighbors. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All righty, next written request I have is from James Shiflett. Colonel, you're up. You know the drill, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is James Shiflett, Colonel, Army retired. I live at 1954 Crystal Downs Court, Oviedo, Florida, and I've been the proud resident of this city since October 1992. First, I want to thank you, the council, for their tenacity in acquiring the golf course. It is a great asset to the community. It continues to improve and players are coming back, and I think that is great. And the most important part about that golf course is that there are not hundreds of houses sitting on the flood plain, which is really the subject of what I came to talk about. I attended the 23rd of April Highway Cove meeting and attended in response to the homeowners that live in Oviedo in Twin Rivers. The first thing that I want to say is that the builder of that area is MI. MI makes a very fine home. In fact, I live in an MI home and have been quite proud with it, of it, and they continue to do very well. There were three things at the meeting that I wanted to bring up that were an expression of concern. The first of those is traffic with the single entry and egress on Simmons Road, and we are of belief, and I'll talk a little bit more about it, that that is, could cause a public hazard for traffic. If there is a wreck on that road, and there's only one way in and one way out, it is going to constitute a problem. The second item is a storm drainage. I've done a reconnaissance and there is an easement between the Twin Rivers and Seminole County. It's been there for a long time, but, you know, we just don't know where the water goes because you can't see it. And the third one is landscaping, which is a traditional issue of major concerns to the people that they have close to it. What I would like to recommend, that we are concerned, our homeowners is going, put out a call in July, we're going to gather together, get all the concerns of the community, and gather them together as the Highway Cove Phase III starts. We understand that Highway Cove is outside of Oviedo, but it impacts Oviedo, and therefore we would like to ask you to do something, and that is to invite the Seminole County and the Seminole College to come and talk about what they can do to alleviate a particular problem. There is a simple solution that we pointed out, it's about 200 feet, that is a road that you could get to the Seminole County parking lot, and it would provide an emergency exit and normal path in and out. But we're concerned about on the traffic circle, if everybody comes out and people think they're going to turn left, they're going to have surprise at certain times in the day. So, my request, our request is to basically invite the leaders that are involved directly with something that's going to impact us to come address our concerns. Thank you very much.
Colonel, could you just email that to us with the dates of your meeting, so that way we know contact and when it's going to happen?
Yes. I was running late for my proposal, so I just scratched this thing down. I will put it together and get it in. Thank you very much.
That is the end of the written requests I have. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address council? Name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Hare, 2099 Kimberwick Circle, Oviedo.
I'm sorry, 2099.
Kimberwick Circle. So I am here to address the splash pad issue that's been talked about in regards to the safety there. As a lifelong resident of Seminole County and a longtime resident of Oviedo, I support the park and all the amenities it has to offer. The main concern here is the close proximity of the child splash pad to the lake without appropriate measures in place to keep kids from falling in. Majority of times I've been there, it's been mainly children five and under playing at the splash pad, children who are too young to comprehend the dangers that this area entails. What we're asking is something rare these days, and that is to be proactive instead of reactive. Are we going to be the city that waits until an accident happens, or do we want to show our residents that we care about the most valuable members of our community, our children? As a nurse in the ER, I've seen child head traumas after falls. I've performed CPR on lifeless toddlers that have drowned. This is not just a minor accident. If this happens, it's going to, it's a play area built next to a cliff with no barrier. At the very least, there needs to be some type of additional barrier between the splash pad and the wall. It's full of wildlife there that's enticing to small children. Some have argued that if we would just parent, our problems would be solved. From what I've seen, every time I visited this park, parents are paying attention. And I think the concern that parents are sending, who privately messaged me, are telling me they support this movement and have, having more safeguards in place at the park. They're doing just that, they're parenting. The hardest part about being a parent is seeing the world through your child's eyes and all the danger that it entails. Some of us, maybe some people who don't support this, don't remember those days or are not yet parents, but once you have children, all you want to do is keep them safe. Many parents could not be here tonight that wanted to come, as they also have young children like myself, and could not break away from bath in bedtime. But hopefully, they have sent you emails, Mr. Mayor, in support of adding additional safeguards to this area. We hope that you take our words serious and know that this is not something that is going to be an if, but a when. When an accident happens, I want to know that I've done everything in my power to have prevented it. And that's all I can ask of you guys tonight. Help us prevent an accident from happening at this park. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, we did receive two emails.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All righty. Is there anybody else who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda, items four through seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
No, sir, it looks good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
To my right? All righty.
Good.
Everyone's good. All righty, so the motion on table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Give me a moment, and I will catch up. First item of business is the first reading of an ordinance, this is ordinance number 1684. It's an amendment to the city's official zoning map. Mr. Groot, can you read this by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Oviedo, Florida, to change the zoning district of approximately 1.99 acres located east of State Road 426 and south of Mitchell Hammock Road from county commercial C3 to city commercial C2, providing for legislative intent, implementing actions of savings provision, non-complication, correction of scripturers' errors, conflicts and separability, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. The subject property was annexed many years ago, and it was also assigned a future land use designation within the comprehensive plan. It was assigned the commercial future land use designation. However, we never changed the zoning. The Jehovah Witnesses were already there at the time when we did the annexation, and so we didn't see any need, there was no development proposal, so we just did not go forward with any type of zoning change. This ordinance will change the zoning to a C2 city zoning district, which is, that is, when you look at what you tried to accomplish with the zoning map amendment, one, you want to make sure that the zoning district is consistent with the future land use designation. The C2 zoning district is that. You also look to see if it's compatible with the surrounding area as far as zoning districts within the surrounding area as well as uses within the surrounding area. This zoning map amendment also satisfies those two criteria as well. Tonight, we're asking that the city council schedule a public hearing for July 15, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for ordinance number 1684 on July 15, 2019, here at Oviedo City Hall, in the Oviedo City Council chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Chudna, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Good. Good?
Good.
Mr. Cobb, you and I talked about this briefly. Essentially, the C3 county zoning is basically the equivalent to the C2 city zoning.
This is merely a change in jurisdiction.
Right, all righty. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. All righty, so we have a motion on table to schedule the public hearing for ordinance number 1684 for July 15, 2019, at approximately 6:30 PM. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So, let's see, we've got resolution number 10. Let's see, you're on to resolutions. Item number 10, pardon me, it's resolution number 3761-19. It's the public arts logo selection and approval. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to approve the final design of a public arts board official logo, which is recommended by the board. They've been working on this for quite some time, and they've gone through a series of designs that was prepared by one of the board members. At the meeting, they selected what's known as concept number three, and has recommended that the city council adopt the public arts logo. And Madeline, do we have it up there?
There it is.
And what, we are recommending that the city council adopt resolution 3761-19. If you do adopt this logo, then we will bring forward an ordinance to incorporate it into the code of ordinances so that it will have the same protections as all the other city logos as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is there anybody here from the arts board that'd like to make a presentation, or it's not necessary, it's?
It's pretty self-explanatory.
You guys approve this logo, you like it? All right. Seeing no public comment, written requests, anybody in the audience want to address council on this side? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion, and what is the pleasure of council?
I vote for number three.
What's that?
I vote for number three.
I just need a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to adopt resolution 3761-19, accepting that logo.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Henk, can you have the floor?
I think it looks great. Thank you for your hard work. I know when you guys go through stuff and you bring it to us, there was a lot of thought and a lot of, I've seen some of your meetings, when I come in to get my mail and I listen a little bit, so, good job, and it'll work out fine.
Councilman Pollak, you have the second.
Looks great.
Councilman Chudna?
Looks good to me.
Councilman Britton, you still want number three?
I want number three.
All righty. Well, that's a no from Councilman Britton, then. I think it looks great, who am I to judge art? It's your board, a lot of work went into it, I'm sure, so, great job. Anything else from the?
I actually did look at them before I saw the recommendation, that's why I picked them, so.
Really? Number three?
Yeah.
Well, there you go. See, that's ours.
This is number three.
All righty, so, motion on table is to adopt the recommendation of the logo from our public arts board. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Going on to two brief discussion items. Item number 11 is the voting locations for the upcoming election. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. At your March 25th work session, the council gave us, gave us direction to open three voting polling locations during the 2019 general election. They were the Live Oak Preserve Community Center, Riverside Park, and Oviedo City Hall. We are having construction done at Riverside Park, and we are concerned that we will not be able to get the construction done in time for the election. We, therefore, we brought another alternative to the council. At your last work session, we proposed switching Riverside Park with the Aquatic Center. Council gave us, gave us consensus to investigate Oviedo Presbyterian Church as a possible polling location. That way, it would be in the same general location as Riverside Park. We did find out the church is available. We've checked with the supervisor of elections, he's on board with it as well. Actually, the cost goes a little bit down. Using the Presbyterian Church, the total cost would be $21,610. We're seeking your direction tonight to open three polling locations as the Live Oak Preserve Community Center, Oviedo Presbyterian Church, and then Oviedo City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is that the consensus of the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Looks like we've got consensus, Mr. Cobb. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All righty, we're going to move on to item number 12, a discussion on an ordinance regulating puppy mills. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Cobb for a brief introduction, then we'll go to Deputy Mayor Pollak if this was his item.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Mr. Groot will probably be able to provide a lot of information on it. This is a request for you to give direction regarding the establishment of a ordinance regulating puppy mills, kitten factories, and other local regulations of such businesses. The county has adopted an ordinance that states that local pet stores cannot sell dogs and cats from puppy mills and kitten factories. And the thing about it is, is that unlike everything else in the county's animal regulations, this one does not apply to the city. It only applies to unincorporated Seminole County. I know Mr. Groot has worked on a similar ordinance for the city of Sanford. Basically, the ordinance says that they can't sell animals from these, from the puppy mills and kitten factories, and then it all, but it does allow them to do adoption days. So, one of the things that, with the Sanford ordinance, is that we were able to work with the county as far as enforcement, and so tonight, we're seeking your guidance on whether or not you would like for us to also pursue such an ordinance regulating pet stores. We'll tell you, we have one pet store in town, as the pet supermarket over on 434. And we also, I believe we have two pet feed stores, but they don't sell animals, so, but I just wanted to let you know that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Deputy Mayor, did you want to hear from Mr. Groot first, or?
Yes, please.
Well, the only thing I'd have to add is what this really does is impose a business model. Unlike some police power ordinances where it says you can't do this or can't do that, and it's, and that's all it is, is just a prohibition or a mandate, this actually imposes a business model upon, upon businesses which limits their source of animals to sell to rescue organizations and shelters. So, now, the issue that arose in Sanford was a, and I'm going to use some lawyer words here, okay, because I don't want to say for sure, one way or the other, but the issue that arose in Sanford as to a particular business was whether or not it was grandfather, because its business model wasn't based upon rescues and shelters. It was based upon other sources of the animals. And our view was that it was probably grandfather, and we left it at that. And since the county was, is the enforcement agency, went through the local agreement, that's all we said, is that we thought it was probably grandfather. So, if you have a business that is using a source other than shelters and rescues, it's likely probably grandfather, too.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Deputy Mayor, the floor is yours.
I, you know, this, this came to us in an email, probably, I guess, what was it, like three or four weeks ago? I looked into it, and with all the rescues out there and the shelters and everything else, and, you know, I don't see a need for, for puppy mills and kitten factories to come to, to our city. The county's already taken action on it. Sanford's taken action on it. I think that, I think that we should, you know, follow their lead and, and pass an ordinance that would, that would prevent, prevent those from being sold here in Oviedo as well, so.
So, your question is, is do we have consensus to do so?
Yes.
Council? Yeah, any questions?
I do. I'd like to know what the definition of a puppy mill is. Is it, if someone has a dog and it has babies, are they prohibited from selling them? Or is this something where they have a, you know, a kennel in the backyard with 50 dogs that they're breeding?
The, from, from what I understand is, how this would work is, it would be selling the animals at the pet stores themselves. So, if you had a breeder that, that was breeding dogs, they couldn't bring those, those over to the, to the actual pet store and sell them to the pet store so that they could, you know, retail them after that.
But the breeder could sell their dogs independently of a pet store?
Pet store, I believe so. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Groot?
No, actually, as I, I'm trying to refresh my recollection of the ordinance.
But also.
First, it imposes, like I said, the adoption-based business model. Then it goes on to say, "It also means that pets purchased directly from a commercial breeder or indirectly through some other intermediary, such as a broker or wholesaler, may not be offered for sale." Okay? So, it, it's prohibited and lawful for a pet shop to offer a dog or dogs or cats unless each dog or cat was obtained from an animal shelter or an animal rescue organization." And so, it's, that's what I'm, it's imposing a business model, but that's where your source of your animals is created.
For a pet store, though. So, if, so if there was a breeder in Oviedo, they just couldn't sell to the?
Pet store.
Pet store. They could still sell to an individual.
That's right.
Right. There's not, I don't believe there's anything prohibiting a private person from selling a puppy or a kitten to another private person.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Mayor, so I think you've got to look at this at two ways. So, if somebody is, is a breeder and breeds golden retrievers, and they do it from their home, or, you know, they have a farm or whatever, and they're taking care of these animals, they should be fine. It's when you get these mass buildings that have hundreds of animals that are treated poorly, they're not getting the right care, that's what you have to nip in the bud. I don't think somebody who breeds, I mean, everybody's had dogs, they got them from somebody who might have had puppies, is, you know, for, for me, this whole thing centers around is where they're coming from, are these animals being cared for? And if you look at puppy mills and you start doing some research on this, you find that there are these mass, mass-producing stuff, and they don't care about the animals. So, that's what I think you've got to distinguish what we don't want in Oviedo. I have no issue if, if somebody has a home and their golden retriever has eight puppies, and they took care of all of them, and they want to sell them. I mean, to me, I have no issue with that. It's, it's the abuse and the lack of care that these commercial establishments, I think that's what you're trying to get at, that we need to say you can't have that. So, if somebody came in and bought a building like the, you know, the storage center on Lockwood, and there's, you know, 6,000 animals in there, and they're in cages this big, that's what you want to stop. So, I mean, if you can write it that way, I'm in support, but I think somebody who's, who's cared for, for an animal, and they've had it, and it has pups, and they want to sell them, I mean, I don't have an issue with that, it's just the abuse, I think, is what you've got to try to stop.
And the ordinance also prohibits the sale in certain areas, such as thoroughfares, common areas, flea markets, festivals, yard sales, medians parks, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's also prohibiting those types of sales, too.
So, Mr. Groot, if the council decided, excuse me, to go forward with this, we're just really adopting what Seminole County is?
That's exactly, that's what, that's what Sanford did, is adopted what Seminole County did.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes.
And actually, if you adopt something different, Seminole County won't enforce it. We found that out. Through some other areas of pet ownership.
Mr. Groot, I have one question. This ordinance, then, would no way prohibit, because when the department gets a canine, they're not going through a rescue, and wouldn't, this would have no?
That wouldn't have.
Okay.
All righty. Any other questions? Is there consensus for staff to move forward?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll give consensus, but I want to read this more, so we'll be discussing later, right?
Yeah, it's got to come back.
Yeah.
You're good? All righty, got direction, guys.
Thank you, Mayor.
All righty, so that's the end of our, our business part of our meetings, and now we're on to city manager's report. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Yes, Mayor. A few meetings ago, I asked you about who would be the city's voting delegate at the League of Cities Conference this year, and I know, I think it came down to Mr. Pollak or Mr. Britton, and I was just curious if the decision had been made on who's going to do it.
Didn't we talk about that last?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still up in the air, so, yeah.
Councilman Britton, it is.
Okay.
For the 14th year in a row.
I would have thought your replacement two weeks ago would have put that on top of your list when you got back.
That's right. Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Groot, anything from legal?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Britton, you're up.
All right, I got a couple of things I just want to go over real quick, so if you give me a few minutes. First one was we, Chief and I participated in the PD-Boston Golf Tournament a couple of weeks ago. It's always a good time and it's a, a very good cause. What'd they say, Chief? They've given over 120 scholarships over the years.
Over the years.
So, it's a, a good cause and they dedicated it to not only Mr. Boston, but his grandson, Lump, for the day. So, they dedicated the tournament to those two good gentlemen. League of Cities, I went to the Transportation Committee meeting on Friday and they had a lot of good topics. One of them was on electric scooters, and there's a, a good side of that and a bad side, so they had a lot of discussion on what the, the bad side is for smaller cities. And so, if we're ever considering that, I, I think they have a value, but perhaps we'd have to regulate that pretty, pretty stiffly to keep those in line. A lot of discussion on affordable housing. Again, I think the legislature this year rated the fund, so there's not near as much as we would hope for. Building code changes that were, Teresa, are you aware of the building code changes that have, were passed by the legislature?
Oh, tough.
I can give those to you. One of them that concerned me was the ability for a, an owner to have a private sector individual do their home inspections and override a city inspector. There was a lot of discussion on that and whether that is something that really protects the consumer. So, I'll send you the information. I'm not even sure they, they take effect yet, but they, they could have some impact on us, on what, what we do around here. And then finally, on the League of Cities standpoint, they really want us, elected officials and municipal governments to reach out to the legislature and be advocates for home rule. And so, I'm going to reach out to Mr. Smith and, and Mr. Simmons if I, if I see him and try to engage them and make sure that they're aware of our concerns on, on the threats to our home rule.
Great.
So, finally, Bobby, is there a way we can recognize Chris? And I, I forget who the other gentleman was that was mentioned from Tuscaloosa.
Come on in.
Yeah.
Do we still do those Starbucks?
I like those.
Yeah, starting with stars.
I have a personal opinion about Starbucks, but I won't go into it.
It's not Starbucks for coffee, it's a recognition.
It's like Willie Stargell used to do when he played for the Pirates.
It's easy to recognize Chris. I don't remember, I don't recall, who was the other gentleman's name?
He is with Ultimate.
Oh, it's contractor. It's, it's easy. I don't, I think it's a way to reward him, but Chris is easy, he works for me.
Yeah, I think we need to get Chris up here so we can recognize him.
He won't come.
Well, what about-
Why don't you, why don't you send him an email?
What about Don Feutz and Ben Williams? I got another email up here from Larry Noft, really praising them for their support-
For the house.
Roofing thing. So, if you could pass along to Ben, congratulations and keep up the good work. And Teresa, if you can pass along to Don?
I want to tell you, just so you know, just why I'm standing here, the reason why a bunch of things was done is because I go that way to work to and from every day and I've done it for 17 years, and I couldn't take it anymore. And so, that's why it was done. So, you're welcome. So, anyway.
Well, Bobby, here's a phone number. They got millions of dollars, so.
I think I made the same.
That's okay, you'll never live it down.
You know, I see, I see our employees every day doing stuff and they really are a good bunch of folks. They're all valuable, so when, when we get a chance to recognize them, I think we ought to, we ought to do what we can to make them feel appreciated.
Well, that contractor, I agree, does go above and beyond. Since we got them, they actually came in and took over for somebody else that was having some issues and they, they do do a great job, so I'm not surprised, but thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Just to let you know, when I got the email, I didn't know about Chris. We do have a program that we do recognize employees when they, when they receive accolades like this, and so we will, we can put Chris into that program.
Yeah, but I want to see him up here. He ain't up there.
But we did with Ben and Don, I actually got the email on that one and started the ball already rolling and even notified Mr. Smith at PDCS, Don's, Don's boss, about the work that he's doing. And so, we recognized him not only through our, our channels, but we also recognized him through his own company and, and Ben as well.
Just let them know that we, we know and we appreciate them.
Will do.
That was like, Bobby, when, when Ray climbed down that sewer to find Gina's ring that got flushed, he, but Ray wouldn't come either and he went above and beyond that day, you know? So, just tell them we appreciate them.
Well, we do have great staff.
That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
All you got. All righty, I'm up and I've been on vacation since our last meeting, so I have no report. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
And I'm so glad you're back.
Did you have to sign a lot of things while I was gone?
Not too many. It wasn't a good time. So, and I'm, I'm good. I don't have another report.
All righty. Steve, you're up.
Thank you so much. Mr. Cobb, I just want, I talked to you a little bit today and I wanted to address, lady, you came up and talked about Oviedo on the park and that wall and just so, because I talked to Asher at News 13 today and so many emails on it. You know, Brian, just correct me if I'm wrong, we are going to look at that and see what the best practice is for that. It's not falling on deaf ears. There's a lot of people that have called all five of us, so Brian, you told me today you guys are going to look at some stuff, come up with some, some ideas and bring it back to us, so, you know, just so everybody knows, it's not, when I brush it away. You told me you have some stuff that you were looking at, maybe a PowerPoint or something or whatever we spoke about.
Actually, if you all want to see it, I've got it ready.
Oh.
It's if you want to see it.
Go ahead and run it.
It's up to you all, yeah?
Madeline, if you'll pull it up, please. Madeline, can you move the, move the mouse around and see if we can see it? Okay.
Actually, I'm going to ask Chris to let me drive.
There you go.
So, it'll be a little bit easier.
Do you want to take the microphone with you so they can get it on the tape?
We have, this is, this is a narrow photo of the, of Center Lake Park as well, honing in on the playground as well as the, as the splash pad. The playground being here and then the splash pad being this area. One of the things that I wanted to be able to also show you is the seat wall, the plazas, the, this is the Boathouse Plaza here.
Are you pointing this up? Because I can't see.
Yes, sir. You can't see it?
Yeah, but I see your mouse on.
Oh. What do I have to do? Oh, there it is. Okay, I've got to look up there. Okay, now we know. This is the Boathouse Plaza here. The seat wall begins at the plaza, it heads down this way, and then we come into the Marina, or the Cantina, the Cantina Plaza, where we have railing and then we get into the seat wall again. We get to the splash pad. At the end of the splash pad, we have more railing and then we go into the seat wall, which goes down to the, what's known as the Jimmy Buffett stage. Now, this is a zooming in onto the splash pad to be able to show the splash pad here. One of the things I would like to point out to the splash pad is everything that we've done in this park is ADA accessible. And so, we have to make sure that any solution that we come up with has to be, make sure that those with disabilities can access any facility within this park. And one thing about this park is a series of rooms, and so you have to be able to transfer from one room to another room without any impediments. Now, the one thing about the splash pad is that along the west side is where we have the picnic area. And so, there is direct access between the splash pad and the picnic area. Children can go back and forth between, usually that's where the parents are sitting. If you look to the picture to the left, you'll notice that you can see that it transitions right into it. When you look into the middle picture, though, you can see the steps. Now, the steps do provide some barrier to prevent the children from running. It's not a, it's not the ultimate barrier, but it does provide some barrier. There's also steps along the north side as well as the, the sign, and then there's steps on the other side of the sign as well. Now, the handicapped accessibility comes into play from the south side, which is down, down in this area here. This is looking down to the south, you can see the, the seat wall there. And we'll tell you that seat wall is approximately, it's anywhere between 16 to 18 inches depending on the level below it high. It's 25 inches deep is what it is. So, you can see the, you can see the, the railing here, the railing that is there, it's known as the Beauty Berry railing. It is a specially fabricated aluminum railing with a wooden top on top. It's 42 inches tall from the, from the grade up to the top of the rail. So, let's see here. Here we go. Okay, jump down here and we'll go on to the next one. All right, this is the playground. One of the interesting things about the playground is that it is below the grade of the street, so you're actually stepping down as you come in from the street. Oops, didn't mean to do that. Here we go. I want to go this way. Let's see here. I should have let Madeline drive. So, the thing that I've noticed about the playground is this, on the south side, we have an, we have a landscape barrier there, and it's a pretty thick shrubbery except for one corner. And in this area right here, which is near the, the little apparatus that spins around, the landscaping is not as dense in this area here. There is, you can go straight in from the east, you'd have complete access from the seating area here underneath the osprey trellis. And then what it does is it creates a free access between the Boathouse Plaza and the family lawn. And so, you can be able to traverse right in. When you get over here on the south side, we actually have a wall. It's a seat wall. The seating is on the south side of the wall, but this provides a wall. There are bench seats inside of this wall, inside the, the playground. On the west side of the playground, it's, it's intermittent. There is a rock wall there. It's probably about a foot, 18 inches, 18 inches tall. But there's also steps. There's steps to right to provide access over into the Cantina, and then there's also a handicap ramp that provides access, and so that's something we'd have to do. The landscaping in the corner, there's landscaping here as well as a sign that this, the staff uses to promote events. And of course, across from that is the bathrooms and then the Cantina. Here's a picture of the playground. Once, as I said before, coming in from the east, you can see how it is an A-grade entrance there from the east to go into the park, from the Boathouse Plaza as well as from the Family Lawn. This is that corner I was telling you about, the landscaping there. You can see the dense shrubbery that picks up. This is a little bit less. There's a light pole here as well and some, basically some palms. So, it's not as intense there in that corner. That, that would be, that would be a corner that would be concerned about. This is the north side hedge that is there. It's a very wide hedge, very thick hedge to get through. We've actually, that's when, we've been working on this hedge for quite a while. We had some issues with it in the beginning. Also, when they put the shade structure in, we had to replant a lot of it, but it's, it's coming back well. This is the west side where you can see the rock wall, the handicap entrance and then as well as the steps and then back down to the, the rest of the rock wall. This is the steps going in. You can see the wall on each side. This is the north side of the playground and you can see the seating. And then, of course, there's benches behind that wall and then the rock wall with the, with the shrubbery in there. This is the seat wall, and that's one of the things about this wall is it is designed for people to sit on. That's why it's 18 inches tall and 25 inches deep. It was never meant for people to stand on. It does provide somewhat of a barrier between the park and the water. However, it's not, you know, it's based on the emails that I saw, it's not the desired barrier, but it does provide a barrier. Let me go back a little bit here. Well, I should have let Madeline drive.
If you go here, you can look all the sides.
Okay, let's just flip back here. Okay. There we go. Now, there's, the seat wall, there's, it's divided into three sections. It's 222 feet total. The first section is 94 feet, and then we have 47 feet between the Cantina and the splash pad, and then we have another 80 feet between the splash pad and the, and the stage. You can see here, this starts off, we're standing at the Boathouse Plaza. You can see the seat wall going around. The playground is here, there's the Cantina. One of the things I would like to point out is that any time that we go out onto the water, such as the Boathouse Plaza, the Cantina Plaza, the Splash Pad Plaza, the railing is there. That's where the railing is. The second one, this is standing at the Cantina. You can see the difference between the 42-inch railing and then the 18-inch seat wall, and then it goes out to the splash pad where the, the railing is, and then once again, we have the, the wall. There is some railing here just before you get to the, to the stage. This is looking back east from the stage toward the, the splash pad as well as this, no, this is looking back from the splash pad east toward the Cantina, so you can see the wall there. And then this is looking back from the stage toward the, the splash pad here. And once again, you can see the railing here, you can see the railing there. One of the things I would like to tell you about is that we have a very robust recreation program. And so, one of the things that I noticed in reading the emails was that we actually offer what is being requested, but just not at, not at Center Lake Park. We offer them elsewhere. This is the Jim and Aquatic Center, which is located on Oviedo Boulevard, just north of Center Lake Park. At this park, you will see that we have a, there's a playground here. It's actually a trailhead for the Cross Seminole Trail. It has a, it's fenced from the water, it has a play structure, it also has a bathroom and two picnic pavilions. Here, we also have the, this, what we call Splash Zone. Now, the Splash Zone has a higher level of service than what you have down at Oviedo on the park. The Splash Zone has, oops, didn't mean to do that. Splash Zone has, it's fenced in and it has lifeguards, it has umbrella chairs, it has all the security that you need, that, you know, at least from what I could see in the emails, it's provided at the, at this park. We also have the big hulu for the larger kids to go swimming in. Inside the gymnasium, you have locker rooms, bathrooms, you have the concession stand as well. So, that is one of the options that we do provide to residents is that they can go to Splash Pad. Now, because of the higher level of service that is provided, there is a fee. For residents, it's $5, and for non-resident members, it's $7, and then for non-residents, it's $9. This is Boston Hill Park. One of the things I want, well, if I can get it to stop. This is Boston Hill Park. One of the things I wanted to point out about Boston Hill, it's located on State Route 434, next to our new fire station. The parking is here as well as if you turn in on the side of the fire station, you can come down to the, to the basketball courts. Right in this area here, underneath these trees, is a shaded playground. It's also got a bathroom facility, it's got a fenced-in baseball field, as well as down in this area, there's a big play area. This, this park is very popular for small children to go play on playgrounds. A number of times, we find people that like to come to this park, have picnics and gatherings. It's also a very popular basketball park, too. Friendship Park, which is over by Lawton Elementary School, Lawton House, we share parking with Lawton Elementary School. Friendship Park is another park that has play apparatus for various ages. It's fenced in, it has its own bathroom, so, and it's also a rental facility that, for playgrounds, and so that's, this is another popular park. This is Round Lake Park, one of our, what Mr. Bowler calls our hidden gym. Round Lake Park actually has two playgrounds on it. It is, it's under construction right now. As you can see, the new tennis courts that have recently built, we still need to get the playfield grassed in. One of the, one of the basketball courts is getting a cover, getting a cover over it right now. That's the last thing we need to do. And the tennis courts, I don't know if you can see it very well, but the tennis courts do have pickleball courts lined on it. But these playground, this playground, the playground to the north there is a new playground, and it's very, very popular. We do have fencing along the north side, and there's also at this park, there is a board wall around the lake that a lot of scenic walk, and so it's a very good park. There's picnic pavilions in this park as well. This is Long Lake Park. You can see up there on the north side of the park, we do have a playground here. The play apparatus was recently replaced, and I believe we've also replaced the swing sets that were called out. There's, there is a, there's bathrooms there, there's also a pavilion there for picnics. You can see the basketball court, the playfield. Around the Stormwater Pond, there's a walking path, and so this is another option that we have that's off, it's off Carolyn Drive and on the north side of the Kingsbridge This is Riverside Park. This is one of the older city parks, but it provides a lot to the city, to residents. There is a playground at Riverside Park, it's right here by the kiddie pool, and we do have a swimming pool here, we have a skate park, we have tennis courts, we have a large multipurpose field with picnic areas there. This is another option. This playground is also fenced in, and it's off Lockwood Boulevard. One of the things about this, as we mentioned in the prior item, we do have some roofing construction going on here. Mr. Bowyer informed me that when the pool is open to the public, we do charge $3 for residents, I believe it's $5 for non-resident members, and $7 for non-residents. Now, one thing about the seat wall is this, it did have an inspiration. This is the Sanford Seat Wall on the Riverwalk in Sanford, Kissimmee on Lake Toho, whoops, I got too far. Here we go. Kissimmee on Lake Toho has another seat wall there overlooking water, and then in West Palm Beach, you can see this, very similar to the seat wall that we have. This is another urban park. That's one of the big things about Center Lake Park, it's an urban park, it's in an urban setting. All the other parks that I showed you are basic suburban parks that are set back interior to the park, whereas with the urban style of Oviedo, of Center Lake Park, everything's right there together, and so, we have to be cognizant of that tight space, anything that we do, if council so directs us to do it. The thing is, like I said before, our big concern will be ADA accessibility. So, I wanted to provide you all with this information so that you could see, whoops, see how, as far as the different features of the park, but also the different features of our recreation system, in that we do provide, the things that I saw in the email, that was one of the things when I was reading the emails, we do provide those types of facilities, but they're just not at Center Lake Park, they're at other parks. And so, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Actually, it's Councilman Henkin has the floor, it's his.
Thanks. I just wanted, you know, to just let everybody know, we've heard so much, that, you know, we are looking into it, see what we can do, show you the other options and out there, and, you know, whatever staff recommends, we'll take it under advisement when it gets back to us. One other thing I wanted to say, Colonel, thank you for your assessment of the golf course, living out there, you know, it is election season, and I know your hotbed issue with that golf course, and, you know, I always point out to people running for office and the ones up there, sometimes you sit up here, and you have to listen to the masses, and I remember when we started that project, I don't think I got one email from anybody of the hundreds that we got, that said, "Don't do what we did." You know, "We did what we did, and it worked out." So, you know, sometimes, you know, if you have a vision of the city, and the masses don't have it, you go with what the masses want. They're the boss, and I still maintain to this day, we did the right thing out there, it's working great, it's getting better every day, and as other cities close their courses because they don't have the vision that we had, that becomes even more of a great amenity for the city, so, thanks for the update on that, we appreciate it. The Simmons Road thing, I agree with you. If that was ours, I wouldn't have voted for that. That wasn't mine, but I would just tell you that upfront, we got all the calls, and that is a tough one, so we should get another route out of there, but anyway, thanks for the update on the course, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on that, I do believe staff sent a letter to Seminole County about that access when they were building Hideaway Cove, so, it wasn't that we didn't try to act, it's just that the county moved in a different direction. Chief Chudnow, you're up. I'm sorry, Councilmember Chudnow, I will get that right eventually.
I just have two quick things. Something that Councilman Britton said, there's, since part of the Seminole Trail is in our jurisdiction, there's a new bike store that, that's an incorporated, that sell electric bikes, and saying that they can ride them on the trail. However, the trail says no motorized vehicles, so...
Oh, you mean the electric bikes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how that works. I'm staying out of that one.
Well, I guess that's my question, probably to Mr. Groot, if it says no motorized vehicle, electric motorized vehicle is a motorized vehicle. So, I just, because I can just see them being on there, and us getting complaints in other jurisdictions. There's complaints on those.
All I can say, that should be clarified, obviously, because...
Right, and that's...
You don't want the enforcement issue to blow up.
I could see some issues coming down the pike on that one. And the other thing, there's been on social media, on the Nextdoor social media, a, I'll call it a conversation, that was started by an individual talking about the ADA lawsuit, and it indicated, that person's opinion, that the ADA lawsuit was a hoax, so the city didn't have to be transparent.
Yep.
So, I guess my question to Mr. Groot is, could you, for the people that are watching, kind of, can you touch on that a little bit for me?
I don't typically say things like this, but that's one of the most laughable things I've ever heard, that there is ADA litigation all over the state. The Florida League of Cities is going all over the state, training its members how to address these lawsuits. There's been newspaper articles all over the place, Daytona Beach News Journal recently had one. TV stations have covered this issue. Mr. Joel Price's bankruptcy action, God bless his soul, indicated that he has, I think, I forgot, 50, 60, 70, something like that, claims against different jurisdictions. This is a national and statewide epidemic. Every jurisdiction that has a website is facing this type of issue, and the worst thing about it is, is, and Mr. Cobb, I'm sure will agree with this, the better your website was, the more outgoing and transparent, and the more information that you provided your citizens, the more vulnerable you were to an ADA complaint, because if you had a problem, then fixing it is a very difficult issue, and a very expensive issue. Those jurisdictions that happen to have very old website systems, who were, like one of them, that Daytona Beach Shore, that was in a transition to a new system, that was easy, because all the new systems are pretty much ADA compliant. So, I cannot understand where anybody would come up with the idea that that was a hoax. I just can't, I cannot fathom that.
And I might also correct that, unlike zoning in progress, even if you're working on a solution, if you're up there, you're still open yourself to that liability.
Absolutely. There's no good faith, good intentions, good spirit defense to an ADA complaint. Basically, you're vulnerable to a series of ADA complainants, so if you pay one off, and then say, "Well, now we'll go back up," inadequate, then you just open yourself up for the next complaint and the next settlement. And I see Mr. Kelly nodding his head, he's got quite a task trying to fix this, and, but I know you're working on it, too, so. That is not a hoax, that is an epidemic.
Mr. Groot, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Chudnow, appreciate it. Is there anything else to the good of the order?
Just real quick, going back to the ADA, can we keep the agendas that we post, the ones that are, because these ones are ADA compliant, correct?
It's only the actual agenda sheet that's ADA compliant.
But they do have all the memos now attached to them, it's just they don't have all the bulk of the stuff behind the memos.
We can keep them up for longer. We ran a series of trials and trained staff to get them in shape to be placed on there. The older ones, anything previous to, I believe, this meeting, would not have the memos attached, but if it's council's wish, we can certainly leave those up there.
Yeah, I mean, they're posted up there now, or at least this meeting was posted up there. If we could just leave it, and then start from now, moving forward...
Eventually, the list will get pretty long, there's no way to search, the way we're doing it now, to keep it compliant, there's no way to search for a specific date. The sire software that we used to previously put the agendas up is very outdated, like Mr. Groot said, and does leave us susceptible. So, it will just go into basically a list, and keep populating, keep populating, keep populating, until a fix is, a permanent fix is applied.
Well, we're working on the permanent fix, right?
Yes, we are.
This won't be that long by the time it's fixed, right?
We are working with vendor for a new agenda software package, and, like I said, there's, discussions are ongoing.
Okay.
I got a quick question. How are we going to handle packages coming in from outside of City Hall for the agendas? Like, from applicants? You know, like, this week, the agenda was only 90 pages long, last week, the agenda was 600 pages long. How do you make all 600 pages compatible if they're not being created in this new software?
That's one of the things we're talking with the vendors about, and each one of them sort of has a different take on it. Most of it would involve staff work with the PDFs. Some do have a HTML format that you can put the agenda on the website in HTML format, which is a little easier to read for the screen reader programs.
Okay.
But, again, each and every one of them has a different take.
So, once we decide on the system, then the applicants are going to have to submit stuff in a format that is easily convertible for us, I would assume.
Yes.
The burden shouldn't be on us, the burden should be on them who provide it to us, would be my opinion, but I guess we'll worry about that bridge when we get to it.
The agenda software vendors are scrambling, just as the cities and government entities are, to try to figure out how to fix this as well.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Patrick? I think I already have the answer to this, but I'll ask it anyway, just for putting it out there. So, the website, we know is not a hoax, and Chief, thank you for bringing that up, because, you know, it's one or two people that have this issue, you know. I don't see a lot of people calling, they can call Elian or Barbara and get whatever they want, whenever they need it, if they so desire, it's just a convenient way to aggravate the city, to be honest with you, but if we put our stuff on Facebook, because it's our page, we'd still be liable the same way we would if it would be on our website? Is it only websites, or if we put the agenda the way we did on our Facebook page, or on any other social media, would that get us around the ADA, because it was not on our official website, so people could have a place to get it en masse? We'd be still liable the same way?
That's a Mr. Groot question. I don't think so.
Still be liable the same way, because it's our page?
It's a program, it's a facility.
Yeah, I just thought, I'm just trying to put it out there.
Yeah, that length that you would go through to get to that document would have to be sourced somewhere.
Yeah, I kind of knew that, I'm just trying to figure out a way to get it, but...
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks.
I do want to say thank you, this is better than just the agenda, so, you know, and there's a lot of cities that do just this, and just show the memos along with the agenda. At least it gives someone the, you know, a little bit more context to what the item was about, so if they wanted to further research it, then they could contact City Hall and get the supporting information from it, but at least it gives a little bit more context, and thank you so much for doing it.
And the clerk's office, as Councilman Henkin noted, is more than willing to put it in the drop box and send you a link, anyone requests.
Thank you, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I got a couple of follow-ups.
Okay.
One is on Mr. Seibert's, or Seiber, he was our old city manager. The president of the campus, Oviedo Campus, is Jeff Gibbs, and I'm sure he'd be happy to sit down and talk with us on what they can do over there on the campus, if we get the right folks together. And the second thing I had is, it kind of bugs me, Brian, on the issue with the Center Lake Park, I hope, that was a good presentation, but I hope that's not the end of the story. Are we going to come up with some ideas or recommendations to address the lady's concern?
We can definitely take a look at it, if you'd like us to.
Okay.
I will tell you this, putting the railing on top of the wall can make things worse.
Okay, well, let's explore, we don't need to do a design review here, but let's explore other alternatives, some sort of fall protection, or signage, or whatever we can do, let's get some ideas together, and maybe work with the actual users of it, and find out what's really concerning them, and address it. I don't, I'll just be frank, I don't think what we did tonight went far enough to addressing the concern, so, we need to go a little bit further, as far as I'm concerned.
Well done.
Done.
Alrighty, future meeting dates, we have Monday, June 24th, 5:30 PM. We have a budget work session that'll be here at City Hall. Also, I believe we have an update coming from FDOT on 434.
Actually, they are unable to attend that nightmare. Evidently, something happened at Metro Plan, and so, they had to back up, and they said they will be getting back to us as soon as they get that issue resolved.
Okay, well, then, we'll sit tight on that, so we'll have the budget workshop at 5:30. July 1st meeting is canceled, that's July 4th week, as we customarily do. Monday, July 15th, we have a CRA governing board meeting at 5:30, and then a regular session at 6:30, and then Monday, August 5th, 6:30 PM, regular session. All that being said, we're adjourned, it's about 7:35.